Hello there. Good evening, everyone. It is Tuesday, December 12th, 2023. I'd like to call the meeting of the Peoria City Council to order. I'd also like to welcome everyone who's here in our city council chambers as well as our listening audience at WCBU. I'd also like to welcome our audience watching on cable channel 22. This is actually our last council meeting of the year of 2023, and we'll be back the second Tuesday of 2024. Madam Clerk, the council mics are open. Please call the roll.
Mayor Ali.
Present.
Councilmember Allen.
Present.
Councilmember Seer.
Here.
Councilmember Gordon Young.
Present.
Councilmember Graham. Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Kelly.
Here.
Councilmember Euler.
Here.
Councilmember Riegenbach. Councilmember Valpula.
Present.
And Councilmember Vespa.
Here.
We have a quorum present, Madam Mayor.
Great, thank you, Madam Clerk. Everyone, please join me and stand for a moment of silent prayer or silent reflection, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Allegiances to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk?
We are at the approval of the minutes.
Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I move to approve the minutes of the regular city council meeting held on November 28th, 2023, as printed.
Seconded by Councilmember Valpula. Any comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We have one town item. Twenty-three dash three ninety-six is a request from the town officials to approve the November 2023 actual expenditures and to approve the December 2023 anticipated expenditures for the town of the city of Peoria.
See Graham?
Yes, Madam Chair, I move to approve as outlined.
Is there a second? Seconded by trustee Gordon Young. Any comments or questions? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at the consent agenda. Twenty-three dash three ninety-seven is a communication from the city manager and chief of police with a request to approve the purchase of one used vehicle from Uftring Auto Group in the amount of $29,700. Twenty-three dash three ninety-eight is a communication with a request to approve the low bid from J.C. Dillon, Inc., in the amount of $1,807,070.60 and award a construction contract in an amount not to exceed $4 million for the drainage repair contract. Twenty-three dash three ninety-nine is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to approve the low bid from J.C. Dillon and award a contract for the storm sewer cleaning and inspection project in the amount of $293,398, with an additional authorization of $29,342, 10% of bid for contingencies, for a total contract award of $322,740. Twenty-three dash four hundred is a communication with a request to approve the low bid from J.C. Dillon and award a contract for the storm sewer lining and repairs project in the amount of $55,290, with an additional authorization of $55,530, 10% of bid, for contingencies, for a total contract award of $610,820. Twenty-three dash four zero one is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $148,060 against specified parcels as described in Exhibit A for tax year 2023 for the Knoxville Junction Special Service Area. Twenty-three dash four zero two is a communication with a request to adopt an ordinance levying a special service area real estate tax in the amount of $100,000 for the tax year 2023 for the Westlake Special Service Area. Twenty-three dash four zero three is an appointment by Mayor Ali to the East Village Growth Cell Committee with a request to concur of Matthew Smith and Blake Eggleston. Twenty-three dash four zero four is a communication from the city manager with a request to approve the cancellation of the regular city council meeting on December 26th, 2023, and twenty-three dash four zero five is a communication from the city manager with a request to approve the 2024 Peoria City Council regular meeting schedule, and that concludes our consent agenda.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Are there any items to remove from consent? Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Item number twenty-three dash three ninety-nine.
Thank you. Are there other items to remove? Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash three ninety-nine is a communication from the city manager and director of public works with a request to approve the low bid from J.C. Dillon and award a contract for the storm sewer cleaning and inspection project in the amount of $293,398, with an additional authorization of $29,342, 10% of bid, for contingencies, for a total contract award of $322,740.
Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would, I just have a couple of questions, and maybe, I'm not sure if the city man, well, maybe Director Powers could come forth. I'm just, as I was reading this, I was just kind of wondering about the status of these pipes in the first district, and I just kind of wondered why it was not included as part of the work.
Is, can I?
Thank you, Councilwoman. I actually think that, that this would include District One, and that's something that we can certainly verify for you. I think with the, with the redistricting and the way that we redrew the maps, I actually do think District One is covered as part of, of this, because in prior years, most of District One would have been in the combined sewer system, and that's not the case any longer. You do have separated sewers, so they should be part of this, this, and we can confirm that and get back to you on that and let you know that for sure, but I'm, I'm almost 100% certain. I know that Paula Mendez Solavoni is, is here from the Public Works Department. Maybe she can help clarify that if you want to come up to the podium right over here, and we can just confirm that for you, but I do think that, that District One is included.
And also, we want to note that this is a project that goes on every year, so I think locations are selected and we alter, I think they alternate a couple of districts, too, and all of the, all of these inspections are used then for projects, and then if you see the, the projects are also in every district then after that.
I'm sorry, I'm not, it is included, but it wasn't listed?
The current, the current project, as it says, is District Two, Three, and Four, but it's a yearly project, so if it's not in this year, the next year, there's probably going to be locations that are going to be inspected and cleaned. That doesn't mean there's no projects fixing any pipes. There's no projects, in this project, it includes cleaning and inspecting.
So will District One be included next year or this, over this next year?
Not in this current project.
So, so I think what, what the Assistant Director clarified is that, is that in this instance, the projects are specific to Districts Two, Three, and Four. Following years, there will be District One as we look at where we're doing the work in the city.
Okay.
This one is not repairs, it's just inspection and cleaning.
Just inspection and cleaning?
Inspection and cleaning of the storm sewers in these areas.
What, what was, I was just kind of wondering about the rationale for excluding or the scheduling. Was there some rationale to the scheduling process?
Not sure, no.
As long as District One will be included at some point, I'm sure the work is needed.
Well, District One is, is currently, we're currently doing years two and years three of the combined sewer overflow improvements, almost exclusively in District One, so I think we are continuing to invest in the area. This is just, in this project, probably where they've identified to do this type of, of testing and cleaning of the storm sewers are in, just in Districts Two, Three, and Four, but, but I, I do know for a fact that now District One does have storm sewers, so in future years, I'm sure we'll be coming back with, with recommendations to move into District One.
Can you get some more information, follow-up information to, Councilwoman Jackson?
We absolutely can.
All right, well, with that, Madam Mayor, I guess I'll go ahead and make a motion, that item number, or twenty-three. Could we defer this?
Well, you don't have to make the motion, someone else can make the motion, or you can move to defer.
Well, I'd like to do that, if we could.
You want to move to defer?
Yes.
Okay, until the January meeting?
Yes.
Okay. Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Allen. Any other discussion? Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just for clarity's sake, this is just for storm sewers, and it's only in the newer parts of the city that we have storm sewers and sanitary sewers. In the older parts of the city, we have combined sewers, and so we're doing lots of combined sewer work in the first district. The further out districts, and I think that part of District One is included in that, that, you know, the northern part, has the separated sewers, and that's what these storm, that's what this storm sewer repair is about, so it's always going to look as though District One isn't getting its share, but it doesn't have storm sewers and sanitary sewers, it has combined sewers, just for clarity. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're very welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I'm not clear on why we're deferring.
I thought she's deferring for more information, that there's not sufficient information about District One exclusion. Is that correct? Councilmember Seer?
Yeah, I have a question. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Question for Councilman Kelly or city manager. So why is six, District Five excluded, then?
That was directed to you, Mr. Manager.
Councilman? I understand, it's a process, it's a process, it's a process, it's a process. I mean, money goes back and forth different districts all the time, so I understand that, but no, if, if we're gonna, as a district person, we're gonna start arguing about if it's our turn or not. I mean, obviously, the fifth district also has storm water, so, and I know we're in the CPI, that's, that's where you find the information, correct, Mr. Manager? In the CPI report, so, so I just want to make sure, I'm not sure exactly why we want to defer, where we know that we have an 18-year program for cleaning the whole city, really, so, but anyway.
So you didn't really want to answer to that question?
Yes, I do. I want to make sure I don't go on record saying, obviously, the fifth district is not there either, but I understand why.
Councilmember Graham?
Yes, managers, it's time sensitive.
No, I think if we, if we defer for a month, we'll be okay, I think.
I want Councilmember Jackson to have complete peace of mind.
Totally, I agree.
I, I think she, she deserves that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I, I guess, you know, we do this all the time, and I'm not sure why every single agenda item needs to apply to every single district when we're making a decision, so I'll be voting no on this. I think some of these are questions that could be clarified by asking them before we come in here to the meeting, rather than having to put them off until after. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, yes, I agree, and I, I would like to have more information before I, and to get understanding of the process, so I don't feel comfortable right now. As my colleague, Mr. Graham, said, this is not time-sensitive, so it's not going to hurt one way or the other by deferring it, so I, I would just like to wait until I have an opportunity to talk to Director Powers and get more additional information.
Sure. Okay. Let's vote on it. This is on the deferral. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with two nays, Kelly and Euler. Madam Clerk?
We are at regular business. Twenty-three dash four oh six is a communication from the city manager and community development director with a request to approve an agreement with the Peoria Citizens Committee for Economic Opportunity for $150,000 in South Village Tiff Funds for the rehabilitation of owner-occupied homes in the South Village Tiff area.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our community development director for this discussion.
Thank you, Manager. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council. This item in front of you is, the last few years, the city of Peoria is very lucky to have an organization like PCCO in our community, who try to go outside of what they're, do on a day-to-day basis and look for other funding opportunities to help with homeowners in specific parts of the city of Peoria. They applied for a Federal Home Loan Bank grant for housing rehab specifically in the South Village Tiff Funds. One of the reasons they focus on that area is because we've done it in the last few years and provided matching Tiff Funds for the projects. Otherwise, homeowners would have to bring a substantial portion of the project, of the rehab to the project, and by using the matching funds of the Tiff, they're able to make the project go farther and help those who need the assistance. So this is $150,000 from the South Village Tiff Funds. It will specifically be geared towards the South Village Tiff, which will allow us to use the Ida Program that was approved last week on the other side of Western, as one of the locations in the 61605, because they will not be eligible for these funds, so it's very good timing to allow us to, to really help everyone in the, in the first district with some housing funds, one way or another, next year.
Thank you, Director. Councilmember Riegenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
So Director Doolin, was the funding from the Federal Home Loan Bank that BUC and PCCO got, was that applied for specifically for the South Village?
Yes.
And perhaps we need to visit with our friends at BUC and let them know about similar programs called the East Village Growth Cell Tiff, that, that residents are crying the same, same complaint, that there's, they just don't have the funding for their half, so let's make sure that we have those conversations with our lenders that apply for that kind of loans from the FHLB.
In the past, organizations have in other parts of the city. I believe, maybe two years ago, Phoenix Community Development Services did for a similar project in the North Valley, so I think it's cyclical of where they apply, but we'll definitely mention that to some of our nonprofit agencies to look for different funding opportunities, specifically in the Tiff, where there could be match available.
Circular, that's a very key word tonight, it sounds like. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I would just like to commend the city in collaborating on this project. We've had conversations about this before, and for those of you who are not, are not aware, we do have a lot of older homeowners in those areas that don't always have the full resources to make these kinds of housing rehabilitation projects available, so I'm, I'm just grateful that we were able to collaborate and reach some consensus, so thank you very much, Director Doolin.
Well, I, I will gladly take the credit, but PCCO and BUC applied for the application. We just kind of worked with them on this back part, but really, they get their credit for, for applying for the project and doing a lot of the work on the grant work.
Did you have a motion, Councilman Jackson?
Madam Mayor, I would like to make a motion that item number twenty-three dash four zero six be approved, as mentioned.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I'm, I'm very happy about this grant, et cetera, and what it's going to be doing. Once these homes are rehabilitated, Director Doolin, will they be reassessed and taxed for their presumed greater value?
Possibly, like any other property is. Traditionally, we, in rehab projects in the past, when you see them, unfortunately, in disadvantaged areas, you don't see drastic changes in the assess, no matter how much kind of rehab goes into it, to some degree.
Thank you. I, I would like to point out that the two senators, state senators from our city are working on, and hopefully will get passed, this, in this next session, our ability to expand our tax abatement program in some of our distressed neighborhoods, they'll keep new construction, but all, included, hopefully, will be an amendment to that statute that allows the same kind of tax abatement for rehabbed properties, which I think would be, in our situation, a much more practical statute. And even if the assess, even if the EAV goes up a little, at least that much is abated, and if it goes up substantially, why that much is abated as well. So as we're talking to our legislators, let's remind them to get this, this doesn't affect the state at all, it only affects cities, and so it would be a very welcome change in the law. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. We have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. I thank you, Director Doolin. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash four oh seven is a communication from the city manager and assistant city manager with a request to adopt an ordinance approving a redevelopment agreement with Titan Fitness LLC for a proposed project at Lot Two of Medina Plains Corporate Park, Section One, within the Medina Plains Allen Road Business Park Tiff District Redevelopment Project Area.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This is the second redevelopment agreement we're bringing forward to you in the Medina Plains Tiff District. This is with Titan Fitness, they're a 24-hour access gym. I know that some of our council members are members at Titan Fitness. They would be building in the Medina Plains Tiff. The total project cost is about $3.57 million, and we're estimating that it will generate about $1.7 million in tax increment over the life of that, of which 22.5% of that would go to the school district, and the remainder would be split between the, the developer and the city for infrastructure work in the Tiff. It amounts to be about a reimbursement of about 80% of the Tiff-eligible costs over the time, the life of the Tiff, but really because we've got almost the full length of that Tiff going forward, but very excited to bring this forward and happy to answer any questions.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. First of all, I want to say thank you to Mr. Manager and a lot of people in this, around this horseshoe for all the work we've done over the last few years on this Tiff program, and now the work that's coming to fruition. This is the second project on this Tiff area, and I think it's just great, and of course, I have to tease Mr. Graham that, no, the fifth district is the engine of the city, so things are moving along right now, so I'd like to move to adopt this ordinance. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Euler. Any additional questions, comments? Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash four one zero is a communication from the city manager and Corporation Council with a request to adopt an ordinance regarding the Illinois Paid Leave for All Workers Act for the city of Peoria.
Corporation Council Haze?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Paid Leave for All Workers Act is effective on January 1st, 2024. That act will wrestle away from local municipalities some of their authority with regard to their employees. Part of the act was to allow municipalities to adopt an ordinance that addresses similar issues in the act, so that the practices and policies, along with collective bargaining agreements and ordinance and regulations of the cities can continue on without disruption from this state act. This act was really born out of a desire to address municipalities that weren't addressing these issues as the city of Rockford does. We have a comprehensive benefits program, and we provide paid, oh, Peoria, I'm sorry. Long day, sorry about that. You'd think after all this time, I wouldn't laugh that way. In any regard, the Paid Leave for All does have a provision where these ordinances can have their own regulations be effective, rather than the state law. We're recommending that the city council adopt this ordinance today. If we don't adopt the ordinance today, we won't be able to have that effect, so we need to put it in effect before the law comes into effect on January 1st. I appreciate the council tolerating a late addition to the agenda on this matter. I took some continuing legal education course late last week, it developed some concerns, tried to address them with staff, and I felt that this was the better course. I think the mayor would recount that this was an ardent point of emphasis at the recent Illinois Municipal League Board meeting, so we're in step with a lot of other communities throughout the state that are adopting similar ordinances and allowing their collective bargaining agreements and their ordinances and regulations to remain fully in effect without disruption.
Counsel, the lateness is understood, and I was at the IML board meeting, this was a, a big issue, and it, there was an important push from legal counsel, from the executive director of IML, for municipalities councils to get this on their agenda, get an ordinance voted on before January 1st. If it's not done by, before the first of the year, then it's too late, and there are, you know, potential issues there, so thank you, counsel, for bringing that to our attention in advance of the new year. Can I get a motion to approve? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Euler. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash four zero eight is a communication from the city manager and finance director comptroller with a request to receive and file the month ended October 31st, 2023, unaudited financial report. unaudited financial report.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to turn the floor over to our Finance Director, Mr. Craddy.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. The October report in front of you, I will lay out a few of the highlights. Through the month of October, revenues are down about 7.6 million or 8.1, or 8.16%. I feel a little bit like a broken record because I do think I come up here every month and tell you we're still going to meet our budget, which we still are on track to meet that budget. The primary difference year over year is a larger allocation of our personal property replacement taxes directly to our pension funds instead of having it in the general fund. That is equating a large part of that difference. In terms of expenses, our expenses are up about $3 million or 3.1% year over year. But overall, from an expense standpoint, we are still trending below budget at 73% instead of being around 83%. Just in terms of, I think, some information for counsel, looking at, one of the big drivers of why we see revenue lag is how we receive our state taxes. My calculation is I anticipate that the city will receive about $15 million post fiscal year in things like sales tax, income tax, and personal property replacement tax. So if you remember during the budget process, we had a budget surplus of around $12 million. So with the two remaining months that you see in the months of November and December, plus then that additional receipts, that's where we would get to that $12 million. So the good news is we still very much are on track to meet what we had stated during the budget process, and the city's cash flows do continue to remain strong, putting us in a good financial position. And with that, I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Director Craddy. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just one question, Mr. Craddy. We're, we are around $200 million right now in cash and all the different accounts that we have. Tell us a little bit about last year. We received over $7 million interest on our money and that we didn't really forecast on. So talk to us about 2024. I know you have a plan now for this, this interest. Talk to us about that. Where will the money go, please? Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Absolutely. The, in 2024, we assumed about, about $4 million in interest, which is going to be down from about the seven that we anticipated. And there's two factors with that, is we do assume a spend down of some of, some of our fund balance, which was stated in the budget at around $32 million. But also, we, I do anticipate some Federal Reserve action over the next year to lower rates, which will affect the earnings potential that we have. So I think around $4 million is more likely where we'll end in 2024.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Any other questions, comments? Can I get a motion to receive and file? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Gordon Young. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Madam Clerk?
We are at unfinished business. Twenty-three dash three ninety-one is a communication from the city manager with request to adopt an inducement resolution related to a potential tax increment financing district generally bounded by Southwest Washington Street, Sanger Street, the Illinois River, and MacArthur Highway.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'm going to turn the floor over to our Corporation Counsel to let him walk through the inducement resolution and what we're trying to do here with this idea.
Very good.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
As the council knows, last year, the council authorized us to retain consultants to form and explore a tax increment financing district in the area bounded by Southwest Washington Street, Sanger Street, the Illinois River, and MacArthur Highway. That work is nearing completion, and in the next few weeks, the city council will be receiving the initiation documents for a TIF, including a draft TIF plan, redevelopment plan, as well as materials related to establishing a public hearing, and the TIF process will be undertaken. And we imagine that that TIF, without unforeseen disruptions, would be ready to be fully formed and completed sometime in the spring of 2024. Good news about this area is that we already have a developer that wants to get going on a project. We're very proud of Black Band Distillery and its wonderful facility in the Warehouse District. And they have indicated that they want to establish an expansion of their distillery capacity in a building at 2400 Southwest Washington. That's within the area that we anticipate forming this TIF. We've preliminarily decided because of that, as well as the history there, the Bioerja plant was formerly the Hiram Walker plant. And so we, we're going to present the TIF as the Distillery TIF.
Oh, cool.
A harkening back to historic Peoria's history, as well as our future, with one of the preeminent entertainment facilities expanding their spirits production capacity. Because the TIF hasn't formed yet, parties often enter into an inducement resolution, which allows the developer to engage in activities and costs and be able to reimburse them through the TIF if we're able to arrive at a development agreement. We're confident we'll be able to present terms of a development agreement to the city council that the city council will find very attractive and hopefully support. Chris Ober, the principal of a development entity, as well as their attorney, Mr. Oswald, is here tonight, and we're happy to have him here in the chamber. We'd ask that you approve the inducement resolution, which puts the developer in place to go forward with property acquisition and initial costs. And we'll be coming back with a development agreement if we're able to work out the timing of things once the TIFs form. We may be back with a development agreement in advance of that, depending on the pace of this project, for this project, and that's all in accordance with the TIF Act. Tonight, we're just asking for the inducement resolution.
Sure, and I just have a question. Is, is the inducement resolution common to most TIFs, or is that an uncommon practice?
It's a widely used practice. It's largely to satisfy IRS regulations and eligibility for reimbursed, reimbursable expenses under the TIF Act.
Okay.
And it is a common device used when TIFs are in formation or plan to be formed in the future. Oftentimes, an inducement resolution is accompanied by a development agreement with a developer who's doing the work of creating the TIF. That's not the circumstances we have here because we were already in the process of creating the TIF.
Very good. Thank you. Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Mr. Hayes, what is the time or the length that this, this TIF? I'm sorry, what is the length time-wise for this TIF? How long, this will be in place for how many years?
We believe that we'll be recommending a 23-year TIF district once it's formed next year. Of course, the length of the TIF is within the discretion of the city council to establish within that limit.
Would the starting date be in, and will we decide on the starting date? How would that work?
The starting date will be when the city council passes the ordinances that ultimately establish the TIF. That should be somewhere between March and May of this year, depending on all the circumstances at play between this developer and other developers.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you, Corporation Counsel, for the explanation on this. And I think this is an important inducement to note for the public because oftentimes, Peoria is pegged as a city that's hard to do business with, and I think this shows our willingness to be a little bit creative. I mean, it's clearly a process that other communities have used, but I honestly don't recall us ever using this in the past. So I think this, this is, speaks highly of our commitment to encouraging the development. And Mr. Ober, we want to thank you for your continued commitment to our city and talking about having a destination in the Warehouse District. I think Black Band clearly has become that, and we wish you continued success as we move forward with establishing the TIF. So I'd be prepared to make a motion to approve.
Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I go the same sentiments as Councilman Regenbach. Thank you, sir, for your continued investment in the city of Peoria. You have a beautiful establishment. Just one clarifying question regarding the TIF. Will it still have the same reimbursement metrics as previous TIFs in our city, or is that something yet to be determined?
The reimbursement for each development agreement is up to the city council to determine. But by policy, we've established some parameters. There are unique circumstances with every property that's acquired, the different redevelopment project costs that might be at play, and so we'll be developing within that framework exceptions to the general policy. We try to approach developers with a 50-50 split of TIF increment, but that often assumes a lot of things that may or may not be at play with a specific property.
Thank you for the clarification, Corporation Counsel Hayes. I think that's great that we're using the different tools that we have in our economic development toolkit. So thank you, everyone who's been working on this, and I'll be supporting this tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
All right. Now, we have a motion and a second. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, sir. Madam Clerk?
Twenty-three dash three ninety-five is a communication from the city manager and Director of Community Development with request to continue the discussion on short-term rental regulations.
Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I believe that we have Maz Patel and we have Leah Allison are here. They're going to talk through, I should say Maz Perkins, excuse me, I apologize for that. They're, they're going to talk through the, the policy session or the continued policy discussion pertaining to short-term rentals. And I'll turn it over to Ms. Perkins.
Okay, thank you.
Last council meeting, oh, first, good evening, council. A pleasure to be here. At the last council meeting, Leo was able to discuss items regarding zoning changes. I just wanted to provide a little bit of background in regards to why we're asking for license changes within the code. Within the past couple of months, we've had an excessive amount of complaints when it comes to short-term rentals. The first is a property that continues to be used as a short-term rental without approval. This individual has told neighbors that he refuses to cooperate, and he'll continue to use his property as he sees fit. Neighbors are, of course, upset, and the city is seeking administrative action, has sought administrative action, and has received fines, $13,500. We're going to get injunctive relief in circuit court to try to stop the use that's being done at this property. The second property, we did also get administrative relief. It is a short-term rental that was approved by city council. They continued to have a three-day party at this house. Police were called, there's video footage, there was property damage done to neighboring houses, and the neighbors are equally upset. So today, we're kind of presenting ideas and thoughts, gauging additional thoughts from council on how you would like staff to move to make changes towards the code and the Unified Development Code. Sorry, I'm so nervous. I just have to call myself out. I'm not used to talking to you guys as a whole. And Leah, if you've had, if you have anything else to add?
I really don't. I can summarize what I discussed a few, a couple of weeks ago, if you'd like, just as a refresher, from the zoning regulation side of it. Taking a percentage of 3% currently down to 1% for neighborhood associations and areas within a half-mile, currently it's a quarter-mile. So that's, that was the discussion last time. And then adding to that, which isn't currently in place, a buffer, a 1,500-foot separation from short-term rental to short-term rental, which hopefully, in your packet of information, you were able to see a, a map that illustrates what that buffer could look like. It's a little bit, you know, zoomed out, so you're not getting a whole lot of detail, but it just gives a, a sampling of what a 1,500-foot buffer would look like on the current short-term rentals that we have in place. We wouldn't, if this had been in place, you wouldn't see the overlap. So there's some overlap now, but going forward, if you want that buffer, you wouldn't have overlapping 1,500-foot circles. Any questions or?
Yeah, so just clarify, what are the decisions that this council would make tonight? I mean, I see the strikeouts in terms of the proposed changes. Would this be like one, we would make one decision, we would make two decisions, three decisions?
Well, there's two sides to this equation. There's the licensure side, which I think is what you're seeing in your packet with the strike, striking language. The zoning side is just asking for your, your direction. I'll have to bring that back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for a public hearing review, and then back to you for final approval of tax amendments to Appendix A, the Unified Development Code. Does that answer your question, Madam Mayor?
Yes, I'm just trying to determine tonight.
Correct.
How many decisions we would need to make? Is that one decision to direct you to go to the planning and zoning, or is that two decisions related to the strikeouts?
Go ahead.
Well, it's another, I guess it's a continued discussion for receive and file, so there would need Corporation Counsel another motion, and then direction as well. So if this council as a whole would like us to engage the Planning and Zoning Commission on the zoning end, that would be feedback that we'd need today.
Okay.
And additionally, if you'd like to see changes to the license side, we would like that feedback to be as well.
Anything to add, counsel?
Thank you. So our sort of scheme was just that. If we're going to do these zoning changes, we'd bang back the licenser changes with the zoning changes once the planning and zoning, Planning and Commission has made its recommendations. And so obviously, our zoning suggestions would make this a more restrictive use.
Right.
And so instead of having, you know, there was some discussion about, I think Leah worked out one episode, well, right now, under our ordinances for the most recent short-term rental on a, on a special use permit, in that area, you could have up to eight short-term rentals within a quarter-mile. If we adopted the regulations that staff has suggested, you would be able to have up to nine short-term rentals in a half-mile area. Now, that's four times the size. So obviously, over the course of the whole city, it's less short-term rentals.
Right.
That's responsive to the concerns the council suggested by way of setbacks, as well as, you know, density issues. So the setback issue, we'd establish at, I think it was 1,500 feet.
Correct.
And then the density issue was now, instead of 3% within a quarter-mile, it's 1% within a half-mile. So there'll be fewer of these uses going forward than there could have been under our prior ordinances. All the existing uses are, have short-term, that have short-term rental special use permits, they're subject to reapplication when ownership changes. So it may be that some of the existing uses can't go on in that use after a change of ownership because of these restrictions, unless they get a waiver, which is a process to make us, an adjustment to the zoning rules, but council has the privilege to make a decision on a waiver request. So if the council sensibilities in the future is to allow someone to continue that despite a change of ownership, there's a process that the owner can proceed with and the council can exercise its discretion. This will put more control back in the city council's hand, or the city's hand in general, to control the proliferation of these uses. On the regulatory side, we'll bring those back with the zoning changes once they're approved, and those strengthen the tools that staff has to address misbehavior with regard to these uses. Obviously, these licensees, they take risks and they make investments, and we don't want to disrupt that unnecessarily, but their neighbors haven't made any choices about who rents these places. But their neighbors haven't made any choices about who rents these places, haven't made the choice to make their residential neighborhood into a commercial outlet. And so, I think we do these things with special care for the surrounding neighborhood. That's why it's a special use. And we felt some strengthening of the restrictions and penalties would be appropriate, and those are the recommendations you see in the regulation side. So, if there's input from the Council between now and when we go through the planning and zoning, we're happy to make adjustments, and we're able to do that. The planning and zoning changes, any of them, have to go through planning and zoning, no matter what we're going to do going forward in that arena, and so, we want to make aware of that step. We're in line to do that in the January Planning and Zoning Commission meeting, and we'd be back in front of the City Council on the twenty-third of January with those outcomes.
And again, existing approvals are not impacted unless they change ownership. Is that correct?
So, an existing special use on change of ownership, if they want to continue with the use, they have to reapply as if they don't have it.
But only in change of ownership?
Also, an existing special use, if there's one of these episodes, they can be revoked.
Got, yes.
And we, I think we'll undertake that effort on, on the party house that was described once the fines that we've received on there become final.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, staff, for your due diligence with this effort. There's lots of comments coming here. We're going to start in order, Councilmember Reganbach.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you to our staff for doing all this, this work. This is quite the effort. And Councilman Seer, I appreciate your leadership in getting this brought to the fore. I think there's a lot of, of good suggestions and changes here. The one percent density from the three percent, I think, is, is key. And probably, I think, the one that will be most significant, though, will be the spacing, the fifteen-hundred feet in between STRs, because I think that will really have a real impact on the neighborhoods. The one question I do have, though, is how do we address the non-registered STR? I don't think it's really fair to bring that situation into this discussion, because they, they haven't gone through the process, they're not an STR as far as the city of Peoria is concerned. So, Corporation Council, could you give us a little direction without, I don't need to know your strategy or anything, but I mean, that, that's a separate matter from really what we're talking about tonight, wouldn't you say?
Yes, we certainly didn't, I think, intend to mislead anybody, but it is, I think, connected in some way. But you're right, that when someone hasn't applied for the approval of a permitted use or for a special use for a short-term rental, we have enforcement mechanisms, and we've brought those to bear. For many of these episodes, somebody that invests in a single-family residence that receives a thirteen thousand five hundred dollar fine might rethink their activities. It appears that that won't have much of an impact on this individual. It remains to be seen, but we, we understand that they're likely to persist in their conduct. And so, we can seek injunctive relief, which is more labor-intensive, and I think the courts would expect us to engage in our ordinance enforcement first. And if the conduct persists, then that enhances our ability to succeed in seeking injunctive relief. Injunctive relief would allow us to continue to seek fines under our zoning ordinance, but more appropriately, ask the court to restrict that individual by way of an order. And then, if the individual violates that, it's contempt of court. That can affect individuals' liberty, which means they could be apprehended and a guest of the sheriff for a while, to see if that will affect their conduct. So, when financial fines don't have an impact, we can sink and seek injunctive relief. It's inefficient, and the courts generally entertain those types of issues only when there's significant risk to life, self, life and safety, which is not present here, but a persistence of a violation of some civil code, which is what we'll be able to present, we believe, if they continue this activity despite the fines we've imposed.
Is this particular residence listed on one of the Airbnb websites, or VRBO, or?
We have, we have a limited ability to surveil that, but maybe, maybe Ms. Perkins can address that.
It is listed, Councilmember Reganbach.
Is that, do we have any influence over those platforms to tell them that that's not registered with us? I mean, it, that, that just seems ludicrous that-
So, in the short term, we've recommended, we don't presently, in the short term, we've recommended as one of the regulatory devices here, restriction on advertising on these platforms, and that's one of the regulatory changes we've suggested that's in your packet. So, we'll be able to fine the property owners for advertising without having that as well. We are researching and hope to have a presentation available once the zoning issues occur on whether we have the authority and ability to extract fines out of these platforms directly. That gets into a whole lot of jurisdictional issues and limitations even of our very strong home rule authority with regard to extraterritorial conduct. And so, there's some rather disappointing cases out there for municipalities in this arena when we try to do, when you try to have enforcement for entities that are really outside of the city entirely. And so, these platforms may be outside of our reach to address directly through our regulations, but we're looking at that as an option. Municipalities that have done that have been greeted with a wealth of lawsuits against their, or their regulations. So, we're trying to avoid unnecessary litigation, and some additional research may give us a better answer for you in January.
Director Doolin, did you want to weigh in on this?
Yes, I was just going to point out that we do, when we do get complaints of this nature, where they're advertising, and they shouldn't be because they don't have an STR, we do reach out to the websites it's doing. We have had some luck in the past about them removing the, the advertisement. Specifically with this case, the response we got back from Airbnb is that the listing was removed, but they have no ability to cancel reservations that have already occurred. And so, we think that's what was happening with this situation. But when we do get complaints like this, we do, there are some avenues on their website to go in and let them know. Or we've had other instances where Airbnbs, we wish their advertisement on Airbnb was a little more specific about our regulatory conditions, and we've used that as a avenue to reach out and get them to adjust, and they have done that as well.
Well, I certainly appreciate both of you gentlemen, and the, the efforts to, to put as much teeth into the enforcement of that. And I, again, would just point out to my colleagues that this particular property they're talking about is not a short-term rental in the city of Peoria. It's an outlaw, somebody renting their house outside of any law or ordinance that the city has. So, let's not confuse that kind of behavior with the legitimate people that are using these, their properties as short-term rentals. I think that's going to be important for us to keep those two things separated as hard as it may be as we have this discussion. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. I plan to be amicable to some of the proposed changes here, but I guess I just feel the need to address the, calling the proposal here as a result of excessive complaints, when the example is two, one of those two doesn't count at all because it was never approved by us. So, we talk ad nauseam about this subject, yet we don't talk about the normal month-to-month rental, the student housing rentals, heck, even the property owners that sit in here for code violations. We have to have staff just to deal with all of the complaints that those entities provide, yet we go in circle after circle over a handful of people related to this specific issue. So, it seems very disingenuous to present it that way. And there seems to me like a very mixed message amongst this group when we think that this is one of the biggest issues that we have, yet we have out-of-state landlords running rampant in our neighborhoods, but we're not dealing with that, and we're not doing anything to regulate and clean that up. But we just want to talk about this one or two short-term rentals. Thank you.
Councilmember Seer?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We'll have, I'm sure, more discussion, but I'd, I'd like to, to move, to make a motion. But before I do, I want to say thank you to Mr. Hayes, for the great explanation tonight, especially like how you stress on the importance of waivers that gives us overall, at, at the end of the day, we still have control because of these waivers. So, thank you for explaining that to, to all of us. And all of us here, well, most of us, been around for three or four years, and we've been working on this. I don't think it'll ever be perfect, but I really like what we have accomplished so far. So, thank everybody. Thank you, Director Doolin, and to your staff. I really like what we have developed so far. So, my motion is as follows. I move for the Council to direct staff to seek the recommendation of the Planning and Zoning Commission on amendments to the City Unified Development Code to implement the changes to short-term rental zoning regulation as recommended by the staff. But in addition, I'd like to change all short-term rentals to permitted uses, subject to those zoning regulation.
Is there a second? Seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll speak to the motion. This is something that, that I have been pushing for ever since we passed the short-term rental ordinance and regulations. The idea that a person can follow all the rules and have, you know, perfect approval and come here, and for whatever arbitrary reason, we decide, no. I think, as I've said before, I think it's bad law. It's arbitrary, nobody knows, nobody knows what the law is. And so, I'm very much in favor of Councilman Seer's motion, and I hope that the Council will go along with that, and then we'll continue our discussion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Graham?
Corporation Council Hayes, could you translate what you think the intended impact would be if we approved the motion as outlined by Councilman Seer? What would be different about the way Council would be responding to these versus status quo situation under our current order of business?
So, the Council would not, in the ordinary course of business, seek, or see approved short-term rental licenses that are issued as permitted uses that meet all the criteria. The criteria that we're discussing here about proximity would apply, we'd start applying that across the board to all short-term rentals. There is a class of short-term rentals right now that are approved that, you know, under our different zoning classifications right now that are permitted uses. And so, that would, that would go on, and there'd just be an expanded set of opportunities for people to get short-term rentals. It would be an easier process from the business side. The Council would see issues where individuals felt that the, that either the short-term rental decisions were incorrect, or that even if they were correct, they were seeking a waiver. So, in our zoning ordinance provisions, individuals that are up against a restriction with regard to a use can ask the Council to waive those issues. And if so, if the Council, on receipt of the recommendation from the Planning and Zoning Commission, decides to waive that restriction, they can grant the use. And it's, that would be then similar to the special uses. I imagine that we would see far fewer of them. As the Council knows, I think that, the Council has approved a significant number of these short-term rentals. The Council has approved special uses on forty-nine different occasions for short-term rentals, and they've denied five of them. And so, I think the Council would see far less, they wouldn't see the forty-nine that you approved, and you might not see the five that you've denied. So, you wouldn't see the traffic.
So, so what we're doing is taking the power away from the people in the neighborhoods to express themselves through their elected representatives. We're curtailing that with this particular recommendation. This is a Trojan horse motion to erode the ability of neighborhoods through their elected representatives to say yes or no to these mini hotels in the neighborhoods. Can't support it. Can't support it. Even if our fraction is less, we still have, have basically abrogated much of the authority that our people currently have to express themselves about what's going in next door. I will never take that power away from the people to communicate with all of us as elected representatives. And I think you made a good point that, as it is now, we have not been onerous at all in terms of our review. We've approved a lot of these, but we have been the final resting point, which I think is where it should be. That's why we're here. The buck stops with us. I know a lot of you would like to do this. We don't want that hot potato in our district. We don't want it. Take the cup away from us. If you do this, you'll be sorry, because there will be some recommended mini hotels that will not go over in your district, and you will have taken away the power of the people to weigh in. We're going in the wrong direction.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The citizens of Peoria have the ability to appear and to make their voices heard at the zoning commission. An applicant has the ability to appeal to the City Council. I'm not riding a Trojan horse. I've been saying the same thing all the way along, that if we set the rules, and if someone complies by those rules, we empower the zoning commission to give a thumbs up or a thumbs down. The people can and do appear there, and we can also appear there if our neighbors ask us to be there. We leave all the rest, or almost all the rest of the zoning decisions of the city of Peoria with the zoning board, and we do not insist on making all these things special We're quite satisfied with that, and if someone has a beef, then it can come to the Council. So, I think that rather than engage in what I would consider to be arbitrary law, we, we allow these to be permitted uses with rights to appeal. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Other discussion?
Madam Mayor? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I want to, I apologize, my description was perhaps inartful and not complete. The zoning commission will determine whether, to make a recommendation on this zoning change if they receive it, to change the way that these items are approved as permitted uses rather than special uses. But the future applications for those permitted uses will not go to the zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission. These will be approved on the basis that the present permitted-use STRs are approved. And we have a fair number of those that have been approved, and as far as I know, there's never been an issue with any of those. But they, they don't see the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, the- So, the Planning and Zoning Commission will make a recommendation on the process going forward. If these additional items are going to be approved by permitted use, as the present permitted-use ones are. But each specific application will not go through the Planning and Zoning Commission. That is only necessary because of the special use process, and that will not be part of the future if we do this. Again, from a business regulatory standpoint, this is much friendlier to this environment because there isn't additional procedural steps and expenses of the Planning and Zoning Commission hearing and the matters before this council. Your staff is making those decisions on a fair number of these on a regular basis for the permitted uses. They may not be without controversy in the future, but they have been without controversy to date. And that's a method that would be used in the future, and I'm sorry if I didn't include that in my earlier description. Thank you, Madam.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilman Graham.
This intrigues me, Corporation Council Hayes. What staff has made decisions through permitted use for the operation of short-term rentals without input from the people in our city and the elected representatives? Could you give some addresses?
There was an exhibit with the original items that shows the permitted-use short-term rentals on the map, and those addresses include 2311 West Willinowls, 214 Pecan, 701 South Main, 3221 West Greenwood Place, 717 Wyndham Street, 11723 North Scott's Trail, 116 West Beverly Court, 225 Northeast Randall, 1609 West Moss, 255 Northeast Randolph, 1214 West Bronze. I can go on. There's 22 of them. Is that right? Am I right in all this?
Just to add, to answer your question, Councilman, short-term rentals that staff, yes, has reviewed as permitted uses are those that the homeowner resides during the short-term rental stay, just to clarify, versus the special-use short-term rental where their homeowner leaves the premise entirely during the short-term rental stay. That's the distinction currently between special use and permitted use. So, yes, we have reviewed short-term rentals as permitted uses, which is under the condition that the homeowner is present during the stay.
Yes, and everybody knows that.
Okay. I just didn't, I didn't want that misunderstanding.
Everybody knows that. Everybody knows you don't need to come through the process to rent your property as a mini hotel if you reside there. That is not what this discussion started out being about. It's all, it's the universe of all the others where the owner is not on-premise. This is a trap. Don't fall for it, council, or you'll be hearing about it from the people who live in the neighborhoods, who will no longer have the ability to talk to you, their elected representative, about a departure from what's been the lodestar, the guiding principle for this city for many decades, and that's the exaltation of single-family residential zoning with no more than three unrelated people under the same roof. We're going down a dangerous path, and we have seen variants of short-term rentals bedeviling not only legal staff, but proud neighborhoods. We become, in many respects, a city where unscrupulous folks will test our resolve as to whether or not we're going to have application of law following the rules. So, you know, I think we're going to have a situation where it looks as if we're tightening up, if we reduce the fraction, but you're not going to have the oversight anymore, and your constituents will hold you to account if you relinquish being the final resting spot for the approval of mini hotels, short-term rentals, in this community. So, I will vote no against this very bad resolution.
Councilmember Allen.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Great discussion tonight, and thank you, you all, for proposing this. Just a couple of clarifying questions. Under the proposed resolution, if an applicant applies for a short-term rental in a neighborhood, it's going to go to staff. Will the neighborhood that they're trying to enter, they won't be notified about it any longer? This would be just going through the administrative process, but there won't be any notice to the neighborhood that there's a potential STR coming into their residence?
So, typically, no. We would not automatically notify the neighborhood unless we write zoning regulation that requires
We don't do it now.
We don't typically do it now. Correct.
And did you all potentially see other ordinances in other municipalities? Do they use a special use process that we currently have, or were they going through more of an administrative approval process? Did you all possibly survey any other municipalities?
I think when we first started this discussion a couple of years back, it was all over the place because it was so new. So, we haven't revisited specific municipalities in comparison to us most recently, but if that's something you desire, we could certainly do that.
Yeah. This is an interesting concept, you know, just kind of thinking of, I'm just kind of thinking of everything my colleagues have said tonight, and I'm seeing, I'm agreeing with pieces here and pieces there. I would love our process to be more objective. I feel like the last year or so, it's been very tough to gauge who gets approved, who doesn't. You know, if your neighborhood is more engaged and has the ability to really advocate against these, then, you know, typically, it may go in your favor. If you don't, whether you don't have the means to be as engaged, then sometimes that silence is seen as, well, the neighborhood is okay with that, and we know it's not. So, I do think shrinking the pool of allowance, I think that protects the neighborhoods that don't have the infrastructure in place to advocate for themselves. I'm a little nervous on removing the councils, although, I'll be transparent, I get heartburn every time I see a short-term rental on our agenda. But I'm very hesitant on removing our ability to weigh in because I think of the neighborhoods that elect us to do this job, and they want us to be that sounding board for them. So, I am nervous on that regard. And then also, too, the fact that the neighborhood won't be notified that a short-term rental is entering their neighborhood, that causes me some apprehension, I'm going to be honest. I know that we don't notify them of a current, you know, long-term rental unless they see a for-rent sign in their neighborhood. They may know it's a long-term rental, but a short-term rental is just different. You know, it's a different nuance than a long-term rental that is coming into your neighborhood. And so, I don't know if we can work that into the ordinance that we propose, but I do think our neighbors need to be notified of when they get a short-term rental coming into their neighborhood, even if we ultimately decide to go down the administrative route. I think they deserve to have that, whether that is an email to the HOA president or the Neighborhood Association president on file. But again, thank you all so much for your work tonight. Great, robust conversation on a very, very interesting topic. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Councilmember Vespa.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I also appreciate the work that staff's been doing. I think I'd echo a lot of what my colleague, Councilman Allen, said. It does trouble me that we would not notify neighborhoods if we're going to place basically or approve basically a commercial property, basically a hotel room next door, because, you know, if your house next door is a revolving door, you basically don't have a neighbor. It's just people coming in and out, in and out, and, you know, where are the background checks? We found out last council meeting from Councilman Graham when we came here. I think we were all ready to approve a short-term rental, and then he brings up, hey, elementary schools, you know, across the way, and then all of a sudden, we vote against it. So, I mean, if that were to just pass through, you know, staff, maybe they don't catch that. I don't think that was caught till it reached the horseshoe. That's troubling. We don't know if there are any sex offenders out there going through Airbnb. Pretty easy to, you know, rent on Airbnb, and it's, in my opinion, unfair competition for the hotels, you know, which we want to succeed here. It's easy for them to undercut our hotels. I do like the idea of, you know, reducing the percentage from three to one percent. I think that's good. I understand the arguments for sort of streamlining this and not having to have long, drawn-out discussions on STRs so frequently, but I get a lot of emails and concerns from residents who know that there's, you know, a commercial property that's being proposed in their neighborhood, and they are vociferously against it. I would hate to think that those people just wake up one day and just find out that it's already happened. What's their recourse? So, I see some merit to the motion. I think, right now, I'm a no on it, though. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Gordon Yeh.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a lot of thoughts about this. When the STRs come up, I'm always really concerned. I mean, like, I drive to the areas. I drive around and see if there's parking issues, how close the homes are to their neighbor, and so, I can really appreciate the information and the work that you all are doing. I've got a couple of different things going through my head as well in terms of, I think the streamlining, the reduction of three percent to one is amazing, but I am concerned about neighbors not knowing what's going on. I'm concerned about that. I'm concerned about the areas that don't have a homeowners' association or a neighborhood association. How will they be notified? I'm concerned about the fairness in this. I'm concerned about when short-term rentals come to us, how are we really gauging these decisions that we're making? And I just, I just wonder if, even in this revision, if we can't incorporate some of the concerns that are coming up today and making sure that we're being fair. I do appreciate the fact that people can always appeal decisions that have been made or voice their opinion, but there are some that just won't say anything, or they don't know. And so, again, I just don't know where, tonight, we would make a valuable decision that's in the best interest of the citizens of Peoria. I think we need to defer this and gather more information and come up with something that's going to include some of these great ideas that have been mentioned tonight. So, if I could, I'd like to move to defer.
Is there a second on deferral? Seconded by Councilmember Jackson. Continued discussion. Councilmember Jackson.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I do see some very good insight as to how we could tighten up our policy. I remember when we began debating this a couple of years ago, we said we would do it on a case-by-case basis, and we have tried to, but I think I would be, I hear from a lot of constituents as well, I would be concerned about taking away the residents' ability to have input. We have had requests for short-term rentals in neighborhoods where people have outright said they didn't want them, and I do remember voting against it. So, I'm not sure. I like what the staff has started. If we're not under any time constraints, I really would like to see a deferral to give some of us an opportunity to do a little bit more due diligence in terms of getting, I'm still getting input from residents about what they would like to see. And I know, you know, it's kind of, it's our job to kind of figure out how we're going to bring consensus to this, because you're, it's hard to please everybody, but I certainly, if we're not under the gun in terms of time, I would like to see a deferral as well to give it the proper consideration that it deserves, and I appreciate the work you all have done. I would say that you all have given us maybe a starting point, a good point where we could consider some of these revisions, but I would not feel comfortable moving forward tonight on a vote. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Regenbach.
I originally had some comments on the motion at hand, so let me see if I can incorporate those into talking about the deferral. I think Councilman Euler brought up the most salient point, in my opinion. We have thousands of long-term rentals in the city of Peoria. As a district council member, I get calls and complaints often about this absentee landlord, this person that isn't taking care of their property. By corporation council's count, we've had one complaint about an STR in the city of Peoria since we instituted this program. Are we looking at the speck in our eye while ignoring the log, or looking at the speck in your eye, ignoring the log in my eye here? I mean, ladies and gentlemen, this is, I can't believe the time and energy we're spending on something that has not become a problem. Regarding the notification, I was at a neighborhood meeting in Northmore Hills, and Oxford houses came up, and somebody mentioned that we have an Oxford house in Northmore Hills, and somebody said, what's the address? And this neighbor said, oh, my God, that's two doors down from me. I had no idea. And I think perhaps that's the point we need to take away. We've had 49 of these approved, 22 of them we didn't even weigh in on, and they've had absolutely zero complaints. Of the 49, we've had one complaint, and we're going to throw the baby out with the bathwater. I'm extremely frustrated, and I, my constituents vote for me to make my best judgment call, and if we're going to do STRs, let's do it right. If we think that they're a commercial development and a residential area, let's just outlaw them altogether. Let's see if you got six votes for that, because I don't understand where we're going here. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly.
Madam Mayor, I don't have any comments on the motion to defer. I do have comments on the main motion. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Graham.
No, a motion to defer does not, it's not a cloture vote. I think we've gone over that before. We can continue to discuss and debate, Councilman Kelly. One thing that several of my colleagues just touched on, and they said it, and they said it beautifully, we're a tale of two cities. There are parts of our city that are organized, the neighborhoods are organized in such a way that they have produced, through their evolution, restrictive covenants where we couldn't even consider having a short-term rental permit issued. I represent a part of the city, and I think you at-large people need to realize this. I represent a part of the city with no neighborhood association with restrictive covenants because of the way our city evolved. Think about that. We have neighborhood associations in this city that have engaged a We have neighborhood associations in this city that have engaged attorneys to figure out how to stop these from going into their neighborhoods. So, there is no equity in this here. Some districts are more impacted than others. Now, the first short-term rentals began in District 2, and some of the district council members thought it was kind of funny, the way I had to navigate this whole process with people in my district who basically felt single-family residential should be the guiding principle, and that we were over-commercializing and permitting all kinds of distractions. Bad enough that we have, in some cases, a lot of poorly-run long-term rentals, but now we introduced another whole universe of rentals called short-term rentals with constant movement in and out, potential for pedophilia, et cetera. And so, this is a matter of equality. Some parts of our city, and I said to one of you, when this started, when you thought it was really funny that it was in District 2, when it came to your district, you started wriggling around. You started wriggling around. It was no longer fun and games anymore when it was in Lynnhurst. I'll just pick that out of nowhere. Or I could give you other neighborhoods. It was no longer District 2. It was now your district. And so, now, because it's radioactive, you want to get rid of it. You want to go like this and say, we don't want it coming in here. The minute you think you're above this process, that you shouldn't be advocating for the will of the people in your district who are impacted by a short-term rental, you don't belong here. If it's that onerous for you, you don't belong here. In the years I've been on the council, one of the things I have tried to do, and all previous councils, is protect our neighborhoods. Neighborhood-friendly operation of city government. This is not moving us in the right direction. Part of it might be, if we reduce the number, but taking away, as Andre Allen said, notification to the residents, giving them a chance to respond, let us know, bringing it here, that's the way we should continue to do it. Thank you.
You're welcome. I want to say this, we do have another council member that wants to weigh in, and then Corporation Council has something to say, but this is not an easy decision, and it's very complex, and it's not simple. I don't think it's cut and dried. I've heard several council members say that there's been no problems with the STRs. There's been no big problems with STRs in Peoria. So, it does also make me wonder whether the current process has helped there to be no problems as it relates to STRs. The fact that they've been vetted by the neighborhoods, they've been vetted by the district council persons, they've been vetted by the council, whether that has contributed to a lack of problems with STRs? That's a question that I have. That's what puts me on the fence here. I mean, I like the idea with the proposed policy or recommendation that there, again, would be less, there would be more distance between, but again, is it really broken? Is, there's been some inconsistencies, I admit. There would probably be some inconsistencies with the new process, too. But is it really broken, or has it been working better than we think? So, I know Councilmember Gordon Young wants to weigh in, and Corporate Council, let's have you go first.
Thanks. I would just point out that when a motion to defer is made and seconded to a specific date, the discussion is limited to the issue of the effect of the deferral or postponement, provided, however, the council members may advise staff during the debate on the deferral or postponement of any questions they may want answered when the item is back before the council. And so, that's the rule on deferral, just for clarity.
Okay.
I want to thank the council. I'm reminded of a conversation I often had with an alderman in the alternate jurisdiction I used to work in, was some of my friends are for this, and some of it are against it, and I'm with my friends. So, I appreciate that there's differences amongst the council, and some of them are quite severe point-to-point. In general, what comes through to us is as councils trying to direct staff on how to make our community better and function better, and to avoid disruption and chaos where we can. The package that we put before you addresses some of these issues that came forward from the council about proximity and proliferation. I think there's a growing consensus that those are, that those are appropriate and the type of direction the council wants to move. I think the process of approval is a source of quite a bit of division amongst the council about how the right way to govern these issues are. This is a very healthy discussion, and I appreciate the candor that the council members are bringing. It's going to help staff with crafting, if we do change, a set of packages where we'll perhaps bifurcate, if we proceed, what comes back to council so that you can pick and choose. So, it isn't just one does all. Like the motion before us, there's some unfairness to it because it's kind of a one does all. At the end of the day, the motion before us would just put us in play in front of the, in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, and then come back. We're happy to continue this conversation with the council till we get to a point where we know what to bring to planning and zoning. This is excellent, and I appreciate the time councils devoted to this. Thank you very much.
You're welcome, council. Councilmember Gordon Young?
He actually answered my question. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Respectfully disagree with Corporation Council Hayes's opinion on that. I think these two do belong together, because I won't vote for one without the other. I don't see the purpose and why we're making these reductions, but I'm willing to do it if it goes along with a process that allows the staff to make future changes. No evidence has been put before us as a body that says that there is this significant amount of issues going on that drives the need for this reduction. So, in my mind, I'm willing to give one to get the other so that we can streamline this, but if the proposal is going to be separated and come forward first with a proposal to adjust the number, then come back separately with the process change. I won't be amicable to that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you, Corporation Council, for the clarification. And you inspired me to, under the deferral motion, to ask the staff, when this comes back, to, if the deferral passes, to have a number of options germane to Councilman Sears' original motion. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I don't think we have any more comments, so the motion on the floor is to defer this item to the first council meeting in January. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes with three nays, Sears, Euler, and Regenbach. Moving on, Madam Clerk, please.
We are at a policy session. Twenty-three dash four zero nine is a communication from the city manager to hold a policy session on violence prevention funding, and we'll need a motion to open the policy session.
Mr. Manager?
I think we'll need a motion to open the policy session first.
Okay. Just a minute. All right. We need a motion to go into the policy. Is that what you wanted? Okay. Moved by Councilmember Kelly, seconded by Councilmember Allen to enter into a policy session on violence prevention funding. If there's no discussion, please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Mr. Manager?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We do have a short slide deck that we want to put up on the screen, and... There we go. Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to give some background as we get into the policy questions for this evening, and then hopefully, we'll be able to get into the discussion here with the council. On July 19th of 2022, we had a policy session pertaining to the use of the American Rescue Plan funds, our, at that time, the identified DCEO dollars and Department of Human Service funding that we had received for violence prevention. At that point in time, we had established a process. Council concurred with that process, and we went forward. And in two different rounds of funding, we have come forward with selections of different social service agencies or units of government to provide violence prevention funding out of either the DCEO funding that we received from the state of Illinois, which was a $3 million grant, or out of the American Rescue Plan funds. So, on October 22nd, 2022, $700,000 was approved to fund Dream Center, Peoria City County Health Department, the Friendship House, Goodwill, HOI Big Brothers and Big Sisters. And then on July 11th, we had that second round of funding, which included a million and a half dollars of allocations. This came from both the ARPA and the DCEO funds. There, we funded the YMCA, Peoria Public Schools, the Peoria City County Health Department, the Peoria Regional Office of Education, Goodwill, and Friendship House. And in this upcoming budget year, we have $700,000 of the 1.2 million identified for violence reduction, and I'll talk about the other 500,000 in a second, that has been allocated for funding via an RFP process. So, with that, when, over the last two funding cycles, we had areas of focus that we wanted to zero in on for this type of funding. That included thriving neighborhoods, empowered youth and young adults, restoration and resilience, intervention, and violence reduction. And that was really the first question that we wanted to ask you, is if we're going to go out and issue another RFP, do we want to change or modify any of these focus areas for that type of funding? So, that was the first question that we wanted to get to. I'm happy to stop here if we want to have the discussion as we go, point by point, or we can, I can walk through the slide deck pretty quickly, and then we can just kind of take it from there. All right. We'll move on. Second policy question was, does the council want to make any adjustments to the grant funding criteria of who is eligible to apply for funding? We had heard concerns or comments that were made by council, that other government, other public bodies had received American Rescue Plan funds. They may have had their own funding that was coming from the federal government that was for COVID relief. There were some concerns about that. At the same time, we've been the recipient of some of those funds from other governments for doing housing programs, for example. So, our eligibility criteria in the, in the violence prevention funding is that it's for nonprofit agencies, Section 501(c)(3) of the IRS Code, or government agencies within the city of Peoria are eligible to apply for funding. And the applicants that are agencies, are 501(c)(3)'s, have to show proof of nonprofit The third policy question was, does council want to change the process? If you recall, what we did is we took all of the applications, and we gave them to the CDBG Public Services Commission, and had the Public Services Commission review all of those grant applications and make a recommendation to the city council. We thought that that worked really well with the CDBG public service allocation that we receive every year, and so, we used them to provide those recommendations and bring that back. So, they went through that process, they evaluated and ranked all of the applicants, and then provided the recommendation to the council that the council ultimately acted on. The next policy question is, are there any other changes that council may want to make to the process? And we'd be happy to make any of those changes based on the discussion this evening, bring those back to council, adjust the guidelines and the timelines, and we would try and bring that back to you at the next meeting in January. So, for example, I mentioned earlier that we're talking about $700,000. We do have 500,000. We have a total violence prevention budget of the ARP funds of 1.2 million. We had set aside 500,000 of that to be focused on, on the physical, looking at our physical infrastructure in some of our hotspots in the community. And Jacob Mushon, who is here from the Police Department, has pulled together some hotspot maps in Districts 1, 2, and 3, in the areas where we have seen the most criminal activity, and looked at trying to zero in and identifying where those hotspots are, and we'll be happy to send that out to you. But that maybe, you know, we had identified that as looking at trying to make some changes to the physical nature of the neighborhoods, whether that would be looking at clearing trees, or if we have vacant lots, clearing more of the vacant lots so that there, you know, there's no trees or anything in the area, trying to improve, you know, taking down any kind of overgrowth around the street lighting where we can to make it more visible in the evenings, and things like that that we wanted to do. So, that was something that we had been planning on doing with those dollars, but we wanted to talk about that, that there may be some modifications that you, as the council, would want to make in that regard. And then lastly, and this really doesn't pertain to this, but it is, we had talked about this in June or July, excuse me, of 2022, that we had, we were planning on getting from the federal, or from the state government through Department of Human Services, $500,000 of funding to be used for violence prevention work. We didn't receive that money until November 12th, or we didn't receive notification that we were getting this money until November 12th of 2023. So, we have $500,000 coming from the Illinois Department of Human Services that has to be used on, specifically focused on youth, and it has to be spent by the end of June. So, this is kind of on an accelerated timeframe, and because of that accelerated timeframe, what we'd like to do is, for this dollar amount, is bypass the Public Service Commission, but get an issue, get an RFP out for some of these funds for community-based agencies, maybe even some smaller-based, community-based agencies, to use some of these dollars, and then bring that back to you, and we'll probably come back to you with the budget and the plan for that at that first meeting in January. So, that was what we wanted to walk through this evening. Those are kind of framing up the policy questions, and we're happy to answer any questions and look forward to hearing the guidance and direction from you as the council.
Okay. And I'm sure we're going to get a lot of good, healthy discussion on this item, too, but relative to the 1.2 million dollars in ARPA, and staff had in mind 700,000 used for XYZ, and perhaps 5,000, 500,000 used for environmental. So, why did you break it up that way, and what were you thinking about the 700,000?
Well, I think that we had used 700,000 of ARPA in the past when we were looking to allocate that, so we were just trying to be consistent with that. And we had talked previously in previous discussions with the council about the American Rescue Plan funding of using 500,000 for kind of the place-based interventions where we could look at using those dollars in that way. So, that was, that was the rationale that staff had had with those dollars.
Okay. All right. Very good. Councilman Valpula?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So, till date, we have allotted 2.2 million dollars towards violence prevention funding. And then the focus areas are thriving neighbors, and there are five of them, or four, five of them. But again, most of the money has gone to the programs that focus on intervention and empowering youth and young adult restoration and resilience. Before we, and basically, it dilutes the purpose of having five, because majority of the funding that we were given, we allocated are for youth purposes that, if you see Dream Center, Friendship House, Goodwill, Big Brothers and Sisters, YMCA, everything is towards the intervention and empowering youth. everything is towards the intervention and empowering youth. But before, so before we even think of changing the focus areas, I just wanted to know, we spent $2.2 million on this initiative, and I don't know if we made any progress in this. Do you have any metrics to show that this program really reached the people? It really helped the neighborhood safer? It really helped the, you know, youth empowered? Or ultimately, is the violence reduced after spending $2.2 million in two years?
Well, Councilman, we had put in the budget packet, and it was in the first series of budget report packs, you had, the council had made a request for a status report from the granting agencies on what they had done. So we had included that in the packet. We can certainly go back and ask the agencies to update that. It's, I mean, it's been probably two months now. So we can ask them to update that and tell us what they've done with those dollars or what other additional progress they've made since they provided that report to you, and we'd be happy to share that with council. So we can see if we can get that back to you by the first meeting in January so that you have that. That's something I think we'd be happy to ask the agencies, and I think they should be willing to provide that to us.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have, if you go back to the slide wise, I have probably one suggestion that I think would be helpful in this one. I mean, given the recent times and recent events, I think adding, you know, substance abuse prevention or mental health could be more helpful to, you know, curb the violence reduction because, Madam Mayor, substance abuse is frequently correlated with violence. And probably that might add to our thought process where it could be more helpful because we invested money on most of the things. But again, at the end of the day, many of my fellow councilmen might agree that it's the mental health or the substance abuse that is creating more and more violence in the city. So that's one suggestion I have.
Good. So mental health slash including substance abuse?
Yes.
And just to remind the council, that is specifically called out as an allowable expense for the American Rescue Plan funds. So looking at that as a focus area directly ties in with the ARP funding. So that would be something that would be consistent with that.
And if I can continue, can you go to the next slide? Not this one, the other one. So I strongly believe that the CDBG has done a fantastic job. But historically, in my entire life, I struggled to get a grant. Meaning, it's very hard to get a grant. And then I'm very surprised that if you look at the recipients, it's the same people receiving the same fund in less than six months, which really, really bothers me. So I don't know whether this is the right way to do it. Or maybe, if, even if the CDBG wants to do it in a focus area perspective, it failed to do that because majority of the money that we spent is only towards the intervention and empowering youth. So I don't know, I don't know if there is any metric to really, really, again, I go back to the accountability because we spent $2.2 million in two years. That means more than a million dollars for this program. And if there is no way that you can bring back what was given and what, why did we give it? What was, what did we achieve? If there is no way that we can track it, I don't know whether we are doing it in a right way. And to the point that, I don't know if you remember, Mr. Manager, when this discussion happened on October 22nd, you said that they still have money and they still didn't spend it. So what it bothered me more was, you gave money to an entity to spend. They did not spend the money, but again, they got more money to do a different program. So which was something, for me, was not even transparent. So I don't know, this is my personal opinion, but I just wanted to put it out.
If we're talking specifically about the Cure Violence Program, the Cure Violence Program is looking at expanding both into the South Side and into the East Bluff. So the cost and the staging of that was really two tiers. So it's looking at trying to implement and replicate the program in two distinct areas. So that was the reason why they were staging that funding the way that they were. So in essence, they were doubling up on the size of the program.
Fair enough. And maybe if you can go to the last slide, I'll finish up soon. So this is where I wanted to spend more time. I was, I spent more time on this particular thing. You know, most of the times, we give money, but again, it entails to having more transparency scoring system. And I don't know if there is a regular feedback mechanism given to the recipients or the applicants. Because let's say I apply a grant, and I don't know why my grant did not get it and why other people get it. So basically, is there a way that there is a system where applicants can receive feedback on their proposals, especially those that were not selected? And this, and same thing, in the opposite sense, maybe the CDBG can come out to the city council and explain, rather than giving us a number sheet to say what was the rationale that helped them to score in that way? Because they're not distributing peanuts. It's $2.2 million in two years, and we are spending a lot of money on that. So if there is any accountability to show why, what was the rationale that was picked up, that really will be helpful. And then finally, the last one, which really, I would love to see it, is to have the follow-up, follow-up with the funded projects, probably. You know, this is to ensure accountability, but also provides data to inform future funding directions, which I, I mean, for the past two years, I'm observing, but I haven't had a chance to see what was the outcome of all this spend. I like the programs, but I wanted to also see where we are heading with this. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Councilman Velpula. I think that those are all reasonable recommendations. Most competitive grant funders provide some type of feedback to those not selected. I know that CDBG provides a score process, so each agency knows where they scored, you know, from one to however many agencies were applied for funding. But I don't know whether the city currently provides strengths and weaknesses of your proposal to be able to help them next time that they apply. And if they don't, I think that's something that we could certainly ask to be done. So there's lots of councillors that want to speak, so let's keep it moving. Councilmember Gordon Young?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. A couple of comments. I also agree first with Councilmember Velpula about the including substance use and mental health. Critical. I would like, because there's a plethora of not-for-profit organizations in this community who are really in the trenches, who are really doing the work, who are definitely connected to the individuals and their families and know them. I would also like to see, you know, them get an opportunity to be involved and at least have some funding. They've been doing it for free. I'd like to see that. But I also think that it would be important that we begin to connect with our juvenile detention center and related organizations, including the judicial system, I'm sorry, in terms of, we got to look at restorative justice. If we're talking about reducing the recidivism rate, we've really got to hit it where it's necessary to hit it. Often, what happens in some of the programs, of course not all, the people who are attending these programs are not the ones who are committing the crimes. It's the people that don't show up to these programs, and we have to make sure that we're able to reach them where they're at. And many times, it's a revolving door in the juvenile detention center. So I think that's going to be important. And again, making sure that we are reaching those organizations that have been out here. They are legitimate, they are doing the work, because we don't want to discourage the people who are really doing this work because they don't fill out the application as best as someone else does. So again, I think this is great stuff, and a short amount of time to spend a nice chunk of money. Thank you.
Welcome. Councilmember Allen?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a few comments. I think first off, respectfully, Councilman Velpula, I think that we have to realize that it took decades for us to get to this point. And it's going to take more than a year of allocating this fund in order to really see a huge impact in our community. And so I think that we do need to be patient with our community partners. I think obviously we want them to demonstrate updates, and, you know, we have to hold them accountable, and we will as a body. But I think we do have to have the understanding that it took decades for us to get to where we are today. And just because you cut a check, things don't change a year later. I think also I agree with Councilmember Dr. Bernice Gordon Young. I would like to see what I like to call the unusual suspects get a shot at some of this funding, those who have truly been in the trenches. And unfortunately, they may not have the infrastructure like some of our more longstanding not-for-profits in the area. But I would love to see some of them, because for some of the not-for, some of the smaller not-for-profits in the area, $10,000 would be a game changer for them to really do some great work in our community. And so whether that's looking at our application process, is it too stringent? What were some of the things that we learned from the previous round? And maybe we can get some feedback. Again, I don't want us to lower our standards, but I think there's some things that we could possibly tweak to get some of those unusual suspects an opportunity to earn some of this funding. When I look at the core focus areas, you know, I think overall, they're pretty broad. For this next go-around though, I definitely would like to see a focus on workforce development. And then also to supporting entrepreneurship, especially when it comes to young people, especially when it comes to those who maybe have exited the criminal justice system and now are looking for that second chance and are having a hard time finding employment. And so maybe they're looking to get into the entrepreneur space. And so, you know, whether that's partnering with local organizations that have the capability to do that, whether that is the Peoria Area Chamber of Commerce, the Black Chamber of Commerce, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce, different economic driving organizations that can really partner with some of these individuals who are ready to maybe take that step, but that need the infrastructure. So I'm not sure if that could be siloed into one of these focus areas, but that's what I would like to see in this next round. But overall though, I appreciate the report and look forward to the continued discussion. Thank you.
Great feedback. Thank you. Councilmember Euler?
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Piggyback a little bit on what Councilmember Velpula said. I'd like to more specifically ask for what I'd like to see in a report back from the agencies. I realize that, you know, there may be years' gap between seeing actual results, but I think they should at least be able to tell us what went well and what maybe didn't go well with the program that they ran with the money, what they have left out of, you know, what they were allocated. And there should be some benefits, I would think, they're seeing going out the door, something they can feed back to us to say that, you know, out of what we did, here's what we expect to happen. I know when they came in, they laid out a proposal, but there should be something to kick that off to say, out of the things that went well, this is where we think what we did is headed. The mention in there was good about the police chief allocating a half a million dollars, but in addition to that, I'd like to know, are there other things out there that he thinks we should be doing and places that we should be spending money? I don't know if that covers all the needs, if there's other needs that we should be talking about and understanding. And then the, some of the members of the CBDG group raised concerns with me after the last round that they didn't feel the criteria we gave them allowed them to give back the response that they would have given. That we basically asked for a scoring mechanism, but they felt that the scoring mechanism predispositioned them to give the money to larger entities like the government entities rather than the places that they felt on analysis that it should go. And so I'd like some feedback from them on what we should be expecting differently of them to make that a better process. Because I support it going to them as a process, but I want to make sure that the back and forth is effective and that they feel like they're getting the result to us that they want to give.
Very good. And I would ask, Mr. Manager, if we can have that scoring instrument sent to the council so that we can have another review of the very specific questions that are asked.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Grayup?
Why, Manager, are we bypassing Community Development Block Grab Public Service Commission in the allocation of this money?
No, we're not. We're not. Not for the $700,000. That we're planning on. It's this, the $500,000 has to be spent by June 30th.
Okay, stop right there. You see, that's the problem. This is how, this is why government gets a bad name. This is exactly why it gets a bad name. And believe me, I love government when it does right by the people. But look at this memo. On November 12th, 2023, a month ago, the Police Department was notified that the Department of Human Services was releasing a grant award of a half million to the city of Peoria for violence prevention efforts, specifically focused on youth. Police, police were notified. These funds must be spent by June 30th of 2024. Wow. Okay. Police, continue to read this. Police, no mention of citizens. Police have been assembling a budget for these funds that allows the funds to be spent in the accelerated timeframe required by the Department of Human Services. This will include a separate RFP process. The RFP process, now this is flatly stated, folks. The RFP process will not have time to be funneled through the CDBG Public Service Commission. Says who?
Well, Councilman, if we craft that, bring that to you for approval at the meeting in January, and then we would have to schedule, and then next month, we have to issue the RFP, then we're going to have to schedule a meeting of the commission. Then we're going to have to bring that back to the council for your approval so that you would approve that. That's going to leave basically about 90 days worth of time for those dollars to be spent. That's why we're trying to accelerate the timeframe, because we have to have the dollars spent by...
So you can see the madness in this, then?
Completely.
Complete madness.
I agree with you 110%.
It's like it's intentional to cut the people of this community out of the allocation process, making those critical decisions. Now, I like the police. My voting record shows that over 23 years.
But let me clarify, Councilman, that's, this isn't, I don't lay that blame on the Police Department. That money came from the Illinois Department of Human Services that was authorized in the budget to begin spending it July 1st. They should have sent that to us in July, so we would have had adequate time to craft a proposal process to get that money out the door. That's where I look and lay the blame, is with the state of Illinois and not giving us the adequate time to be able to do this right.
I understand that, but here's what we're doing. We're backing our Police Department into a corner now. They're going to make highly politicized decisions, and they will be, on who gets funded and who doesn't get funded. We've already had a flap in this community about what happened to P-GAF, okay? So now, we're going to throw this in the Police Department's lap and say, you figure it out.
No, Councilman, I mean, I think that staff from the manager's office, we have grants staff in community development. We'll be happy to pull a multi, you know, departmental team together. It'll be staff recommended, but it'll be looking at that. And to Councilman Allen's point, what we've had some discussions with the PD about is taking a portion of these dollars and trying to zero in on some of the smaller grant entities. And Jenny Arcreza Whitaker is here. She's really the grants manager for the Police Department. She's offered to lean in and help some of those smaller agencies to do the reporting work that they need to do to comply with this money. So I think we're looking at how we can help some of the smaller entities with this as we go forward.
All right, you understand.
I 100%.
Councilman, the timeline is frustrating. It was to be effective July 1st. It was funding secured by our state representatives, and it was designated, you know, for police and for youth. And it was that state system that was slow getting it out the door. But it still had the deadline of the end of the fiscal year.
And I think too, Mayor, the... And I, I think too, Mayor, the manager has pointed out that we have, we have great staff that will be assisting the Police Department. I see you pointed to one person here. Of course, we have Mr. Mushon as well. But I, I, I think our Police Department needs that help. Because that's something normally they don't do.
Well, you know, one, one of the things that they have been doing this past year is, has been doing some, for some of our smaller social service agencies, doing some grants training and has really been well received. And I think that, that we're trying to do some capacity building. But at the same time, you know, our Community Development Department has really good grants management capability. And so in this instance, I think we can marry the two together and hopefully we'll get a good result out of it.
So there will be a marriage?
There will be a marriage.
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilman Reganbott?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And thank you, Councilman Grab, for that line of questioning because that was going to be my first thoughts as well. Mr. Manager, perhaps you and the chief could get us a list of what the initial priorities are. Maybe you already sent that email and I missed it. But $500,000 is a lot. So I think we need to know that before January as to what they're looking at. And I certainly hope Director Doolin is intimately involved in this marriage because overseeing the CDBG Commission, he, he and his staff have more background information on the players of significance in our community and can definitely give the Police Department the guidance that they need. Because talking about giving grant money to organizations that need help with capacity makes me a little nervous. I think we've all, we all want to help the smaller entities, but we want to make sure that there's accountability for that because this, this could just really go the wrong way if we're not careful. So let's make sure that, that there is the appropriate oversight. What, what I would like, following up on Councilman Euler's line of questioning about asking the current grantees questions is I would like to know what kind of new programming they've offered with the funding that we provided. Are they using our money for existing programs? Or are they thinking outside the box and using, establishing new programs? Because I think that was kind of our intent, was that this would be in addition to what they're already providing. So if we're just getting the same old stuff, then we need to know about that. But if there is new ideas being birthed, I also want to be aware of that. As, as we talk about these priorities, the thriving neighborhoods, violence reduction, those are the two I starred as I was going through this. I think as a district council member and probably all of us, one complaint we hear repeatedly from our folks in the neighborhood is how dark the streets are, how dark the alleys are, and how you just can't see and you don't know who's there. And I would, I would like to see an idea brought forth for this money for, for porch and alley lighting. And I've been told there's even technology now that incorporates ring type cameras in some of this lighting. So let's see how, how we could hit some of those hotspots. And I would love to see that information. I hope we get that tomorrow from Mr. Mushon because I, I don't want to say, let's spend $200,000 on, on porch and alley lighting. I want to say, let's look at where the hotspots are, where the problems are, and see how much money it's going to take to address that. Because I think we've been kind of going about this backwards, in my opinion. We, we know the hotspots. Thank you, Mr. Mushon. We appreciate your attention to those details. But let's, let's look. I think we all would agree that better lighting is, is going to help our constituents feel safer. It's going to be safer. It's going to cut down on lots of things right now. So I, I would like to see the hotspot map. And then I, I don't know who, who, who would put together some locations, but I would like to see what it would cost to, to illuminate those dark spots in our neighborhoods and see this money spent in a way that we can point, that's where this ARPA money went. Restorative justice, Councilman Gordon Young, I think that, that's a tremendous, a tremendous thing that we haven't even scratched the surface as of a community. And I know that, that's not my forte or anything, but the, the juvenile detention center and the, the number of juveniles on the significant event log every morning just, just tears at our hearts, I think. So I definitely want to see something in that regard as well as the mental health and substance abuse issues. So lots of good things to talk about. But for me, the number one thing that I want to hear back is how we can light up those dark streets and alleys. And I think that covers my bullets for right now. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. Councilmember Jackson?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, we have some, and I just need to piggyback on what Councilmember Reganbott talked about. As a matter of fact, he took the words out of my mouth. And we talk about thriving neighborhoods. Well, as I've been saying, thriving neighborhoods have to be safe neighborhoods. And for the past, what, couple of years, Public Works, and we finally have gotten Ameren off of, off, up and moving. And they have been identifying areas in and around. But you talk about hotspots, sir. Hotspots, they're all over the city. I'm going to put it like that. They're just not on the south side or the east bluff, but they have been lighting up alleys. And I'm looking at an email. You know, we want to think of hotspots always as some impoverished area. But I got an email from one of my constituents last night talking about the shooting up around Bradley, around Fredonia and Cooper. Stable neighborhoods, but apparently according to this, these, these three individuals that have emailed me or texted me, they, they don't have enough lighting in their neighborhood, which I wouldn't, I don't know, necessarily consider a traditional hotspot. But apparently violence moves around. And so we, I think lighting has to become a priority, not just in poor neighborhoods, but in areas where we have not even considered. And apparently, these residents are upset enough to suggest that they would like to see more lighting and cameras in and around their areas. So that, I believe, should be a priority for our entire city. Obviously, there are some areas that tend to be more prone. But as we have seen, this activity moves all around the city, especially as it relates to juveniles. And so I think just simple common sense that would suggest that we should move, remove our brush that has been overgrown throughout the city. I would love to see more people on staff and, and code enforcement and public works to do that. And we have to light not only our alleys, but our streets. We have many areas where I've had people tell me they, they've got three or four streetlights down a six or seven block area. So I, I would like to see us invest more money in our infrastructure as it relates to lighting our streets as well as our alleys, as well as getting away all of this overgrown brush that's all over the city. So thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
And, and one last comment. One of the questions talks about, does the council want to change or modify any of the focus areas? And I've been sitting here thinking about reasons for root causes for crime. I do believe poverty is deeply connected to crime. And I, I would hope that we would look at ways we could support some of those nonprofits that are dealing with in the trenches, some of those root causes of poverty. And we do have some that are, that are working vigorously, but they just need the financial wherewithal to continue doing some of the things they're doing. Thank you.
Thank you. Great comments. And I, I think workforce development also gets at that, that poverty issue. Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. May I ask Councilmember Gordon Young a question or two? Thank you. The, the jail and the Juvenile Detention Center are county operations. And they, I think are, well, you are, but others are working on substance abuse and mental illness. How's the county doing with that? Is that an effort that is really underfunded or under, or, or is it, or do people get out too, too quickly and can't follow up? Or can you give us a little rundown on, on those efforts by the county?
Yeah, I, I don't have as much experience being inside of the Juvenile Detention Center. I go in there sometimes just to sort of cover with the individuals who are on suicide watch. But I can tell you, in the Peoria County Jail, there are approximately 290 detainees. There is one mental health provider. One, that's me. And there are levels. There is your, just your baseline depression, anxiety that can be managed with talk therapy or just some of the activities that are there. And then there are individuals that are severely struggling. And they are waiting on the Department of, of Human Services to assess and to transport for hospitalization. And that can take months. The, the Peoria County Jail and staff are doing all that they can. But it is, it's, it's a challenge. It is a huge challenge. And, and the fact that you can't force medicate, there are some that have gone for treatment and every service was in place. But once they come back, you cannot make them take their medication. So it becomes this revolving door. You know, it, as far as the children, you know, some of the mental health diagnosis doesn't occur until adults, adulthood. And so it's adult onset. But if we can get, you know, catch people before they become adults, when the diagnoses are not, you know, when, when you diagnose them earlier, you can treat them earlier. And so again, it's a, it's a, it's a lot of moving parts to it. There's three different departments that work together. There are resources that they're bringing in. But the main thing is, and this is what, you know, we're working on behind the scenes, we've got to come together. Although the Peoria County Jail is in Peoria County, most of the, the detainees are from the city of Peoria. And so understanding the resources that are available and just making sure that, particularly as it relates to our youth, that they understand the severity of their actions. Because it's one thing to go into the Juvenile Detention Center and stay for 30 days. It's another thing to go into the Peoria County Jail and never come out, you know, 30 plus years or so. So again, I think these, if we stay on the topic, the organizations that are possibly in the, in the running to assist our youth, it is not about how large they are. It is not about, yes, they need to have outcome measures. I get that. But there are some amazing people in this community who have dedicated their lives to helping our children and their families, and that matters. When I go in there, I can tell you, there are some, some 14-year-olds, some 15-year-olds that are asking me if I know certain people in this community, and they want them to come see them. Because those are people that have, they've crossed paths along the way and they poured into them. Those are the people that we've got to make sure have an opportunity to have their hands on these grants.
Thank you. And I don't, before they get into your nice hands, they are, they go through the judicial system. Do you feel that the judicial system hasn't? Are they constrained a lot by what they can do for some of these folks? Or are they, some, some judges are good, some judges are not so good? You know, I mean, how can a, I, I don't know the law in this case, but you know, can somebody be pulled out, diagnosed, come back into court and the court then orders a different remedy than just put them in jail?
Well, particularly as it relates to adults, there are options. It depends on their history. So there's mental health court, there is veterans court, there's drug court, and then there's criminal court. And so, for example, if a person is continuously being arrested because of something that is related to their mental health, for example, they may have schizophrenia and they are breaking into homes or they're committing all these crimes because they're not on their medication or they don't have a treatment plan or a treatment team, then they can get transferred over to mental health court, which will mandate these services. So they'll meet with someone every week. They'll have a team that wraps around them. On the inside, we work with those teams to connect those services, get the medication prior to them leaving, have an appointment for them once they leave, have housing, all those things set up to assist. And so it's a, it's a plethora of information. But I can tell you, what I'm seeing is a, a community that is really becoming much more aware and trying to work to make sure that people, that the recidivism rate is, is reduced, that they're not just coming in and out of jail and prison without any intervention. I think, I think the Peoria County Jail has been really good at trying to identify those resources that are available here. I think the judges have done a better job of not just giving out sentencing, but making sure that the services are there so that people stop coming back, you know, so that those changes are in place.
Are you aware of agencies that in your opinion are really good places for some of these folks to land once they're out of the system, let's say?
Land in terms of living.
No, land in, in terms of, okay, you're coming out of the Juvenile Detention Center or you're coming out of the jail and you're free. Are there, I, I'm wondering if maybe there are some places to land for these people, you know, some not-for-profits or something like that that we should be aware of in our funding decisions?
Well, well, I don't want to, I don't want to identify.
I, I don't, I don't, I'm sorry. I don't want names of organizations.
Yeah, right. There are some amazing organizations here. We must keep in mind that you cannot work with children without working with the adults in their lives. And so it has to be a holistic approach. Also, working with the school system and organizations that's willing to do that, I think is important. Most do that. They work with the entire system. And, and so yes, to answer your question, there are numerous.
Okay. I guess it's my opinion, the whole system isn't working very well. And I, maybe you and I should talk later. If there are some outstanding organizations, you know, maybe we should know about those, but we'll talk about it later. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Also, in general, I'd just like to say that I'm a little chary about funding public bodies with this money. Public bodies have public money. We have public money. I think it are, it's the not-for-profits that should, should be our recipients. I very much like the idea of lighting, not only because we need lighting, but it is a long-term solution. I'm fearful that much of this ARPA money, et cetera, when it runs out, that's going to be it for us. And the lighting will stay. And so I'm, I'm very much in favor of divert, diverting money into that area somewhat. And finally, not to pick a fight or whatever, but I don't really think that poverty is the cause of these problems. I think the breakdown of the family is the cause of poverty and the cause of. I think the breakdown of the family is the cause of poverty and the cause of these problems. I don't know what we can do about that, but we have addressed poverty by pouring money into places, and it, as a matter of fact, it's maybe even corrupting. I think if there's anything we can do to support family formation or family maintenance, and I, I don't have any billion ideas, I think we ought to look at that. That is another long-term solution. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome. I think that, you know, our decision whether we include government bodies or not is something that we'll have to decide, vote on probably, because I think that there's disagreement, there's, I don't think that there's full agreement on the exclusion of the public bodies. In some cases, the public bodies are where the, the young people are that need the most help. And so, you know, to exclude them, I think is excluding a partner that we really need to include in addressing the issue. I, I've heard a lot about environmental factors, that it's the opinion of many that can help to reduce the, the violence. And I, I totally agree in terms of lighting up some areas, lighting up some alleys. I'm a big proponent of LED lighting in particular. A lot of our older neighborhoods don't necessarily have sufficient level of LED lighting. Addressing blight in our neighborhoods, which includes removing graffiti, addressing litter and dumping, including technology. There's some new AI intelligence tools that can help to address blight and help to address lighting and, and other neighborhood issues. We need those tools that, those cameras that kind of catch people in the act. So, you know, I, I just wonder, Mr. Manager, about that 1.2 million being divided with only 500 committed to environmental, you know, that's something that, that we may want to increase and have more of that funding. We've, we've done a lot of programming, right? We've done a lot of intervention programming, but maybe more of that money, maybe, maybe 800,000 of that money or a certain number should go toward addressing those environmental factors, the lighting. Do we have, Director Doolin, do you have any information for us tonight in terms of what it might take? Or, or Mr. Manager, what it might take to address?
Well, Mayor, I think that, I mean, running a porch light or an alley light is, is one thing. If we're talking about looking at street lighting, that's a conversation like Councilwoman Jackson's had with Ameren. If you're going to add cameras to it, that's adding an additional cost to it. I think we'd like to at least take some time to be able to come back to you with some identified costs of what that is. We don't have that tonight for you.
Okay.
I think an alley light, an alley light or a porch light might be $1,000 to do that per home, you know, and that's probably on the high side, but depending on what, what you'd like to do. But if you're going to add anything else like you're talking about to it, if you're going to talk about cameras, if you're going to add something else, that adds cost. So we'd just like to maybe hone that down and come back to you with that at the next meeting.
And not cameras everywhere, I mean, but some key spots
Right.
... adding more cameras.
Sure.
But certainly addressing those hotspots.
Yeah, no, and, and, and we'll come, we'll be happy to send you the, the hotspot maps out, but, but I think that there's more, that if we start to look at those areas within our qualified census tracts that we can zero in, it, it'll be no surprise to the three district council people that are sitting right over here, districts one, two, and three, you know, where those hotspots are, but we can, we can zero in on that and talk about some strategies with that as well.
When do we need to decide in terms of this 1.2 million dollars?
I think if we come back at the, the meeting on the 9th with some, some recommendations on that, and we'll put some stuff together for you that, that will allow you to make some decisions at that point in time, that we should be good to go.
Okay. All right. Good discussions, everybody, every, every single body. So can I get a motion to close the policy session? Oh, sorry. I'm sorry. Councilwoman Gordon Young?
I almost forgot I had a question. Actually, a comment for all of us to keep in mind. I am 100% in agreement that improving the lighting can make a difference, but let's not lose sight of the fact that a lot of these shootings, a lot of this violence is happening in broad daylight. It is about the people, it is about the services, it is about intervention. Yes, lighting and environmental is important, but we can light it up, but these things are happening in the daytime as well. Again, just wanted to remind us of all of that, all of, remind us all of that. Thank you.
Good point. Thank you. Can I get a motion to close the policy session? Moved by Councilmember Allen, seconded by Councilmember Kelly. Please cast your ballots. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Mr. Manager. Madam Clerk?
We are at new business.
Is there any new business, anyone? No new business?
We are at citizens' opportunity to...
Hold on, just a minute. It's probably an expression of happy holidays. Councilmember Regenbach?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Actually, yeah, happy holidays. But I was approached by a gentleman at the Health Club recently about how he read in the paper, "The city didn't raise the property taxes, but its property tax bill's gone up." We all know the answer to that, but I just wanted to show once again, and I understand he visited the clerk's office asking that same question, that of your property tax dollar, 11 cents comes to the city of Peoria. So look at all we're doing with that 11 cents, folks. I think we can be really proud of the fact that we hold the line as much as we can on that. The fact that the assessed value of properties in the city of Peoria went up about 6% last year is only a good thing for all of us that are homeowners, and I don't think any of us would, would begrudge that, but the consequence of that is that 11% is, is more when your home is worth more. But I, I think it's critical that we, we separate that, that dialogue from, we're not raising taxes, we're, we're doing the right thing, as Councilman Kelly talks about, raising the assessed value is the way the city's going to continue to grow. So I just had to throw that out there yet tonight. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
You're welcome.
We are at citizens' opportunity to address the city council. We haven't received any cards. We do not have an executive session, so we're at adjournment.
Moved by Councilman Seer, seconded by Councilmember Allen. To adjourn, please cast your ballots. Councilmember Kelly, can you cast your ballot? Motion passes unanimously. Happy holidays. Thank you for your service.